All right, it's 6:30. We'll start the meeting. All right, do we, oh, we do need to add an executive for pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Liquor and a warrant.
Oh, sorry. You're right.
And a warrant.
And add liquor board. Oh, I guess I don't have the warrant. I have my executive, oops, sorry. Paper cut? Just tell me what it is. I don't know where it is.
988-56.
I didn't see that. Liquor board one is there?
Yeah, no, that was just added on.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything on the meeting minutes of December 6th?
Nope, all set.
Town manager's report?
All right, so we got the eight-inch stainless steel airline at the sewer plant replaced on the 16th. This was completed by the local company, Query Industrial Services. I did have a picture that I put in front of you guys today. It shows the new stainless steel line. So, and you can see the hole in the old one. So, we're glad that was fixed before we got all this water. We've relocated the Lions Club memorial sign in front of the, to the front of the town offices. The sign was damaged due to a car accident earlier this year at the Village Green. Thanks go to the highway department for repairing and installing the sign at the new location. And I think Sylvia Ujier is like the last standing member of the Lions Club, and she was gonna do something here in the spring. So, but it came out really nice. It looks good there, too. The Act 250 application for Route 7, Segment 4 project has been filed. If approved, the anticipated completion date is 12/31/27, and I did attach the notice. The Send Text Alert system is now active. This is the one for texting. You guys should all sign up to it. It's just as easy as hitting, it's a QR code, and there's a big banner right in the, when you walk in the doorway. And I have it in your packets, too. We'll be including the instructions on how to join it in the Pittsburgh newsletter that Ann is getting ready to send out, and the town website, and it's in your packet. Notice the hearing and for FY25 proposed budget for Rutland County Solid Waste District was also included in your packet. Just a couple other things that I added. Let's see, we had solid waste. Then we had, I put one on here for the Rutland County tax as well. So, that's actually, that looks like they're gonna have a decrease on this year. And also, we did receive word that we were awarded the Bylaw Modernization Grant. Got that word yesterday. We did not get the municipal planning grant. However, Jeremy from Regional Planning was here today because we had the energy audit done here today. So, he came up to just, and he said that there's another, there's a $4,000 grant that's associated with the MRP, the municipal thing. And you can do enhanced energy plan with it. So, and he said it's, I felt it took me five minutes to fill the grant, so I sent that out. So, we should see that. And I did let the Planning Commission chair know what we received and what we didn't. And then rec. Liz is gonna obtain lifeguard and babysitter instructor courses for, to, I'll bring more revenue to the rec department. Ads for summer camp director have been posted. Liz is requesting candidates have three to five years' experience with children. CPR, AED certification, and a cover letter resume and three referrals are needed. So, she has that posted out in a few places. Bone builders, like I said earlier, is going well right here. Liz is finalizing the MyRec website for release in mid-January. Fundraiser being planned to purchase a batting cage and, excuse me, pitching machine for the upper field. Clay for both fields has been ordered and will be spread in the next month, hopefully. Majority of the swim area project is completed. We rebuilt the retaining wall there and Chad had scraped the mill foil out, so. And the final touches will be done in the spring. And basketball practice is well underway, and games will begin the 1st of January. And also, Liz had tossed this in here for the Pittsburgh Disc Golf Ice Ball. So, just so you guys see what's going on with that. And I think that's all I have tonight.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Any select board member remarks? Any public comment?
Good evening. Butch, State Rep. Stopped by tonight to remind you of the legislature reconvene on January 3rd and 7th after the biennium. Should be a fun time, as I'm anticipating a very lean and austere budget coming from the governor, because all the federal funding has dried up. All that excess federal funding that we had is pretty well dried up. Or either, either that or been obligated. So, it sure to be an interesting year. But if you folks have anything you would like done, or need me to do, or have a great idea, or not-so-great idea. Everybody knows how to get ahold of me, and, maybe get ahold of me through Dave, and I'm happy to accommodate whatever your needs are. So, 3rd of January, we're back.
All right. Thank you.
Does that just go their needs, or how about mine?
Well, yeah.
Okay, Eileen Gaiet. I live on the dump road. Many people know it, know me. And I'm just reflecting things for you from town people, because I think you're doing a great job, all of you. I like the, I like the change that's gone at the transfer station. It does equalize things for people, and it's about time we start taking on some of that responsibility. But people in the town have the two major changes that have happened, want to know, and if you could please share this in some, you know, public manner, the data behind the change, and what, what was the outcome of that data? Data on the, why to do the 25 miles an hour, why to do the change at the transfer station? So, that's just what people are asking, and I myself, along with them. And one more thing I have is, as you can tell, senior dinners. I don't know how much the town contributes for senior dinners. I mean, people are not interested in meals on wheels for senior dinners. I go to other senior dinners and, you know, they do them like in Proctor and things like that. So, I don't know, what is the contribution for the town for senior dinner, for sen, zero? Okay. Can anyone facilitate that?
I don't know why we don't.
They're their own entity.
But other towns do that. I mean, we, for Proctor, it's $5 a person, and it.
Proctor is not through the town either. I live in Proctor.
Yeah.
Proctor, the restaurant owner gives them the price. It's called Marble Valley Seniors.
Yeah.
They're not part of the town either. And he makes sure that it's affordable for them, mostly because his father is like in charge of it. So, that's what, he charges them, and he makes sure he does things that he can accommodate, being the restaurant owner, to afford, to be able to feed them that, at that price for Proctor.
And, and we don't feel that seniors have that? How does Rutland, I don't know. Rutland City does it.
I don't know how anyone else does it.
Some towns contribute that, so that it offsets that. And seniors are important.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, they, they made this town, so that's something, okay.
Senior lunches are really well attended in Pittsburgh.
Don't they have like some fund that they have?
They have, they do have some, yes, they do.
So.
Oh, that's interesting.
So, I, I know Liz and David have been speaking to the administration at the academy, at the police academy. And I had a conversation, the seniors are going there prior to COVID. And meals were $6. If you were a senior, like $8 if they were not. But that, that meal program there is run by a contractor.
I thought they, I don't think they're interested in continuing.
Well, they're, they are.
Are they changed their mind?
That would be nice.
That was a conversation I had with the.
Yeah, Ann Kaprow.
Last time Liz talked to the police academy, they wanted $15 a person, and most of the seniors that go to the dinners cannot afford $15 a person.
Who's the contact person?
So.
I believe it's the Abbey Group.
It's the Abbey.
Abbey Group, that's.
Abbey Group is a contractor. Everything's beginning to settle back down at the academy after the COVID incidences, and you're beginning to think again about how they can be part of the town. Now, now that they have calmed down, they've got new refu classes coming in to have more space with the renovations that they've done up there. So, it's an open conversation, and I believe you'll be contacted or will contact.
Pretty steady communications with the academy. Liz and I did, Liz is our rec director. We did talk to them about the senior lunches up there.
Yeah, it's beautiful up there.
Though, some of the seniors have also mentioned, though, the ones that have mobility issues at the police academy is not ideal. So, there is that.
It is handicap accessible.
There's a long walk apparently, to the, a long walk to the cafeteria.
I don't think they can move the.
Just, I'm just, I'm just relaying what seniors, what the, people who go to senior lunch and have told me.
So, my, my message to you was, I did have a conversation with them day before yesterday.
Okay.
And the deputy director is quite interested in.
Okay. Well, and I do think Liz Alvarado has kept a relationship.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, talk, talk to Liz Alvarado, our rec director, because she's been really involved with it. I don't know what kind of coordination she's doing with it. I know she's quite involved with it, though. So, she might be able to answer all of your questions.
Last name, could you spell that, please?
A-L-V-A-R-A-D-O.
Wow, your voice changed.
Liz, the rec director. Rosie.
Oh, thank you.
All right, does anybody else have anything?
I wouldn't mind a big police academy person carrying me in.
I apologize. Yes, speed limit. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Would you want to answer that?
Want me to do it?
Go ahead, yeah.
So, what, what's the concern with the speed limit, I guess, so I could kinda answer your question a little clearer?
That it's so low for a main highway. I mean, it's like, people are saying, why is it so low when other streets are still 35 and 40?
So, actually, at our last, was it our last meeting or the meeting before, we actually revisited the town's speed ordinance and changed all of the village, village area streets to 25, this out here to 30, Pine Woods to 30.
Yes.
But all of the village is gonna be 25, so.
Based on.
So, some of the concerns were, so, you know, we redid the sidewalks temporarily until, you know, this, the summer, until the construction project happens. There were safety concerns with crosswalks, because all of our crosswalks, except for the one in front of the school, were in 35 mile an hour zones. I think the average speed going through there was like 42 or something. If I remember right, when we saw the speed study.
I saw it drop yesterday at 47.
So, that was one of the big concerns, and that we're a designated downtown, designated village. And it actually starts from Plains Road and goes to the mobile station. So, we wanted to get people to slow down through the village. And the state did a speed study, and Butch and I actually went to Berry for a hearing, and that was where the agreed speed limit would extend. So, the state approved it. And it was just to slow people down, so pedestrians and cyclists and everyone else could get across the road and make it safer.
Right, I do agree that the, that, especially the curve in front of Kamut is.
We tried to get it out further. So, we had, we had a little compromise, but it's not over yet.
Well, my, I have a corner of my house in the village. Can I get a 25? I've had four ha, four cars run into my house.
We can put one in front of your house.
You know, the curve that goes around?
So, we have, for the, the rest of the streets, because that's a state highway, the state can change it.
Yes, yes, the state.
So, we, we're actually, we have those, the, we revised it a little bit, which is some of the changes we made at the last meeting for the board to sign tonight. We have to warrant, we have to post that for.
45.
45 days. And then we'll start changing, you know, if no one appeals it or whatever, and then we'll start changing the signs to reflect the ordinance. So, everything downtown will be 25 in the village.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Transfer station?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, any data on that, the bids that were sent out, or?
So, the reasoning behind it is was, Ann and I had done a ton of, kind of did a research on it, and it had been losing money for multiple years, between 40 and $60,000. So, that was coming out of the general fund. We did send RFPs out to five companies, so you have to have a certification on a transfer station. We had one decline, one, actually sent one in, which is was running in now. So, it's no cost to the town anymore. We don't make money on it, we don't lose money on it, but we would have had to start charging for recycling anyway because of the fees that have gone up. And then I think we're looking at raising the bag fee as well, because we were losing. So, it was coming in at, you know, a price per bag, regardless of the weight, but we get charged by weight when it goes out. So, it was, we were losing money pretty much every time a bag of garbage came in.
I see, yeah. So, it's like, and that's, so how does that run? Is it a private business? He's a private business? So, the, but the area is town infrastructure, right?
Yeah, it's a town, town property.
Yeah, so the town doesn't get any income from that?
We don't lose $45,000.
That's only what it comes down to.
We actually, well, we do have an arrangement.
You might, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
We do have an arrangement with them that they take the municipal trash and recycling and all of any type of rent, which works out quite well for us.
Yeah, okay. So, the, so the reason I bring it up is I live on the dump road, and it's, you know, there's trash all over that road, normally, stuff blown out of trucks and stuff, da, da, da. Now I notice, you know what I'm noticing on the dump road? Bags, garbage, along there, and I, I'm concerned about that. That's starting to happen. I mean, we have a beautiful road there with, you know.
You are 100% correct about the garbage that blows out of vehicles.
Yeah, and it's supposed, the ordinance is, what's the ordinance for trucks? Covered. You have to have covered.
That's something that has to be enforced by the state and DOT, because it's the same thing with, with dump trucks. They're supposed to be tarp'd, and I see dump trucks all the time running down the road with no tarp on. And, and my trucking career, that would have been a ticket for me. How they do it, I don't know, but that's, again.
But that's a town, the town ordinance is to have the, your trash covered. That's not a.
No, actually, that's a DOT requirement.
Well, it may also be that.
For a garbage truck to go down the road, it has to be covered.
No, I'm talking about Butch going down the road with his trash can open, flying out.
Oh, well, no, that's, that's a different story.
That's what I'm saying.
But I'm saying as far as garbage coming out of garbage trucks.
You can go by the day when people are hauling the dump, and how much stuff blows out on Route 7. Because I see it, I pick it up, so I, I understand that 100%.
First, when we have snow, then it thaws. We see everything on the side of the road. Happens every year, you know, and you see it more when the snow goes away, and the McDonald's cups and the twisted tea cans are laying around, you know.
There's a lot of twisted tea cans.
You know, I, I don't think they're ever gonna change that, but.
But now I'm seeing bags. And if we can't enforce the speed limit in town, how are we gonna enforce this illegal dumping?
We are enforcing the speed limit. We've written, we wrote a ton of tickets.
So, I think it's an important.
Warful said he couldn't. The meeting that I zoomed in, he said it was too difficult to cover that and do his job.
Well, we've been writing tickets. I mean, we're usually. I have one off the run sometimes, so.
Other, yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's a good question.
So, that, of course.
So, have you seen this increase just in the last couple weeks?
Yes, I have pictures, if you like.
No, no, I believe you have.
Yeah, garbage bags.
You're seeing garbage bags thrown out.
Yeah, you have to go down by the bridge, the covered bridge, and you see lots of garbage and bags, loose garbage bags.
Down by the covered bridge?
Yes, yeah, and I don't think it's blowing out from, you know, because it's right pa, you know, right past the covered bridge. And that's, you know, comes the snow, then the flooding, which is there now, goes into Otter Creek, and I, people have known me for 100 years, like Joe will know, that how conscientious I am about stuff like that. It's just, so, I, so I just see it as a problem. I don't expect any answers or miracle things to happen, but I just wanted to alert people that.
Thank you.
People are gonna start doing this, they're gonna be flushing their compost down there into the sewer system, and this is what I'm hearing, and I'm just reflecting.
I, I think people who are being responsible, who've been responsible for, or before we made the change, are still doing the same thing. I don't think it's adding to, there's always gonna be irresponsible people, no matter what, unfortunately. We'll keep, we'll keep an eye on it, but. Yeah, I mean.
They're just watching them.
Absolutely.
You know, we just mentioned it to Warful, that, you know, somebody thinks that it's picking up, and we just monitor, and if it is, then we just figure out a way, put a game camera there or whatever.
Oh, good idea.
We have a camera already on the bridge.
Yeah, I mean, there's spots, you know, up past, up past your place on Syndicate that's known for.
Well, Syndicate's.
I thought we had one on the bridge.
It's like two days before greenup day, you find 200 tires on the side of the road, you know. It's just, unfortunately, that's what it is.
Mattresses up there.
I thought we had one on the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
No, the one at the transfer station shoots that way. I mean, you couldn't.
Magnify it, look at the license plates. So, there's one that shoots that way.
But I don't know.
Chad and I'll take a look at it and get a license plate.
Well, I don't wanna take up a lot of your time, so.
No, I know. We had, we had discussed that before, also because of all the damage on the covered bridge, so.
Right, right. And I flashed you a couple of times, and nobody, you know, got it on the big camera, I don't know.
Now, are you, were any of the Mike guy at?
No, there's a Mike guy at? Where does he come from?
Oh, he was in school with me. He lived near where you live.
Oh, he, Fern, Fern and Jean Gaiet up on the, yeah. I used to work with her, Fern Gaiet, at VAC, long before I even met my husband, so. I would say it was a nice name, so.
Any other questions, son?
No, that's all, thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I understand that there's a cemetery organization. We went for a class hike today with my son's class, and we went through one of the trails along the cemetery. I saw one headstone that was knocked over halfway down the hill. I saw a big pine tree in the middle of a bunch of small headstones, and I guess there must have been a school tragedy once, many, many moons ago, because there are a whole bunch of little headstones off to the left, by themselves, with like Riley Child, Megan Child.
Markelosis, wasn't it Markelosis?
Is this the Catholic cemetery you're talking about, or Evergreen?
The town across from Lothr.
Okay, Evergreen.
Evergreen.
Yeah. I was just kinda surprised, and I was like, you know, is that the town that would clean that stuff up? Or do they have to, you know, because I mean, it, it's kinda like, wow, man, to see the disarray. I mean, I, I know everybody's busy, but I, I almost was gonna try to fix things myself, but it's not my place, so I'm not gonna start cleaning stuff up.
Right, so the Cemetery Association does have, has, there is someone that's like the caretaker for that property, so. But I don't know how often he's there when he's not mowing. Like, I don't know if he's there much in the winter.
Usually, he goes through the funeral home, kind of coordinates like the graves and all that stuff. Used to be Dave Barnard back, back in the day. But there is a Cemetery Association, I think.
There is, yeah.
Years ago, I was on that board, but many years ago, I don't even know who's on that hill.
What, the funeral director now?
Yeah, he should.
Our Bulis is on here.
Joe, contact the funeral director.
Okay.
And if they, if he can't direct you.
They can steer you right.
Then they probably have figured it out.
All right, yeah, because I mean, you know, even though she died in 18, in 1912, her headstone shouldn't be halfway down the hill.
No, absolutely. So, all right, so, and then there was a big tree down? Did you say there was also a big tree down?
There was a big tree down amongst those little headstones that are by themselves, probably about 10 or 12 of them.
Okay.
Something like that, off to the left of the trail. And then the one headstone was from the main area that was halfway down the hill.
Okay.
Been from the cavalry property years ago.
All right, thank you for letting us know.
Yep.
You had something?
Yep. Hello again, and good evening to you all. My name is Scott Kaufman, and I, along with my wife and two children, reside here in Pittsburgh on Arch Street. My purpose here this evening is to request that the entirety of Arch Street be designated as to exclude all through traffic entering off of Route 7. The reason for this specific municipal designation is to set into motion the removal of this often abused Arch Street bypass from navigational assistance tools such as Waze, MapQuest, Google Maps, et cetera. These popular navigational resources default to routing both north and southbound traffic, through traffic, onto Arch Street rather than continuing travel by Route 7. It seems unnecessary for this shortcut option to be advertised to drivers that are simply passing through Pittsburgh's village. Although I am excited to soon see the updated speed ordinance go into effect, I do also look forward to future improvements concerning vehicle traffic and pedestrian safety within the village and our greater community. Thank you all for your time here tonight and for the service you provide to the town of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, and that, are you trying to find the, where we had, because we did discuss.
Yeah, the last meeting, we discussed putting no-through traffic signs up on Arch Street, so.
Yep.
Chad, like I said, Chad and I went around looking at everything, so we're, he's got a big order of signs coming in. Yeah, so.
Okay, I, I absorbed that conversation. It wasn't clear. There was certainly no, let's do it.
Oh, I thought there was a.
I wasn't here, so I don't know.
There was discussion concerning traffic signs and possible use in all through.
We agreed that Dave was gonna check it.
Okay, yeah. Well, you definitely said, you said, I don't, I don't see any reason why not, so that's why I was encouraged.
Right, yeah, no, I, yeah, and I don't know what has to happen to have it go on.
We gotta put the signs up for that one, that's all.
All right.
Then Google are not.
We didn't really, I think there's a motion.
I don't know how we changed.
I think you actually have to notify each and every one of those, you know.
Yeah, no. We had someone pull over there tonight when it came through, so.
We'll, we'll get the no-through stuff followed.
I thought, probably, when I first, up the time I got on this board, Arch, Arch Street was, it was a big to-do belt, making out, out of through street, and it was closed off for a while. Tom backed me up on what I missed out on here, but it was closed for a short period of time. It was quite a disgusting, you know, thing. And if I remember right, I did this, and Tom, you, you may be, help me out. It seemed like we had to open that back up for some reason.
For the fucking ladder?
Did the state have something to do with it?
It was just, we had so many complaints from neighbors. We, what we actually did is we closed it one way from the fire station. It was one way towards the Catholic church, and it was one way up towards Kamut's. And it stopped on mechanic.
Or unpleasant. You had to either walk one way or down the other. So, there was no through traffic in front of the fire station, which actually is a beautiful solution.
There were so many complaints from the residents, you know.
Well, and Mr. Gag, you'd mentioned with the one-way, you ran into issues with, with agricultural traffic, tractors. And, and that, that certainly isn't my intention at all. I mean, it really was the navigational tools. And, and I think, I mean, anybody who lives here, or, I mean, if you're coming from, you need to go from the mobile station to the post office, I mean, that's not through traffic. That's, even if you live in Brandon, I mean, that's, you're, you're doing something. So, it really is to try to get it pulled from these, these apps that are sending people on.
Yeah, okay, yep.
To have that barricaded off, it, it does bring in some other problems. If there's an accident somewhere else out on Route 7, that is quite often the bypass route for, for traffic.
We never barricaded it. We never barricaded the sign.
So, it's still getting used.
It was at one point, wasn't it?
No.
When it was.
We never actually put barricades.
Not that I haven't ever.
No. It was just signage for, you know, do not enter type sign, one way. That's all we had assigned to them. There was no actual barricades.
There are times, there might be a, some kind of a town event where Route 7 was being used for.
Oh, yeah, you, you gotta keep it open, so that.
You gotta keep Arch Street.
You, you made a good point two weeks ago, too, that one of my neighbors, he, he has always talked about speed bumps on there. He says, you put them right in front of my house, I don't care, but neither of us had ever thought of the fire trucks. And, I mean, they need to go fast, and they get going, and then they have to stop for speed bumps.
But they don't have to go fast by the firehouse. That was the whole point.
If you were to put them up there, yeah.
Right, if you put one on this side of the firehouse, one on that side of the firehouse, doesn't bother the fire trucks one iota, because they burn out slow the door anyways, so they gain speed, so it would bother traffic.
How would they get into the children, to the library?
Bother the plows a little bit, too.
We have to bother the plows, you know.
How would you get into the library? You'd have to go all the way around?
No, no. It's almost speed bump down by the firehouse.
No, no, he said one way up to Kamut's, one way out. That's what I'm thinking of, the kids going to the lower section of the library.
The one way said do not enter, I think it was, was beyond the library or something. Kamut's was left open.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and, I mean, I really just think selfishly, to accomplish what I am looking to do, I think it just takes, basically, to be in your minutes. I mean, you have decided no-through traffic, and then, and then the company and the power that beat. So, even just the discussion happening and you guys agreeing to it is great.
Well, but we must have to.
You gotta do something, too.
Well, but we must have to, we've gotta do, we've, it's gotta be like the speed limits, right? It's gotta be. Let me, let me look that up, because I don't, I don't think so, I don't think we have to, but let me confirm that, because like you can do like no through trucks and stuff on roads without having to change your ordinance, so.
Could we table this the next meeting for your result on that? And then we can make a motion if necessary?
Yeah, let's find that out.
Be the best way.
All right.
Okay.
And appreciate the back and forth.
No problem.
Yep.
Ma'am Chair, can I just ask Dave?
Joe, go ahead, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Butch.
So, if you can figure out how to get Google or MapQuest, or anybody to take something off and that, you want to let me know, and then I'll run it up to David.
Yeah, no, no.
We've been trying to get Route one oh six taken off, or one oh eight taken off.
Need as well.
No, if you can take every covered bridge road off, it would be great, because we save a ton of money.
Well, whether it happens or not, we'll see.
That's just it, you, you can, which actually was gonna be my point.
No, it's a good point.
Oh, yeah.
You can restrict through traffic, but just because you restrict through traffic doesn't mean that the apps are gonna take it off.
Right.
Because we have a private road by us that's only meant for the trucks going from Florence Carstone to the quarry. It even says at the end of the road, private road, and yet every single mapping program out there will send you down that road. We have on our road, it says, no tractor trailers, twenty-four thousand pound load limit, and I have tractor trailers going past my house, okay? People are stuck on stupid, and the companies aren't gonna make change. So, it's great that you got a sign that says no through traffic, but don't expect people to not go through, because they're gonna continue to go through.
I think it's going to lessen it, it's not gonna get rid of it.
No, nothing's going to ever.
It might lessen it some, but, I mean.
It's just one more tool to, you know, push it in that direction.
Saying to try to take it off of the, the digital devices.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That was that easy.
He's not asking for a proxy card, is he?
Yep, all right, so, yeah, we'll revisit that when he, when Dave gets some more information on that. Is there any other public comment before I move on? Okay, all right, uh, old business, budget review. Anybody have?
So, you guys have in front of you the summary that, that Joe, or Mark asked for. Um, and then Ann's got some notes here, there's really not that many changes since the last time. Um, right now, the budget is down four percent. That's not including appropriations.
Yeah, so, we're, how much are we over if you include the?
Just a little over five.
So, we're up five.
We're up five.
You can't call that a.
To include the appropriations, you're up five.
Which we are having to do.
But we don't know where they sit yet, because.
True, but we're still up, we're still, would be up five, not, yeah.
Right. Which is about par for this year.
Well.
Let's take inflation six.
So, most of our increases are emergency services. It's, it's first response, the cops grant, the PD, fire was up a bit.
I would say it's our insurance that's up.
Well, that was significant.
A lot. That's always gonna go up, so.
Well, it's huge. So, thanks for putting this together.
Thank you.
And thank you, because that's good, I, I looked through it all. Um, I do have a question after looking through this and going back. Um, obviously, a lot of our expenses are in those categories you mentioned, as well as, uh, our insurances. Have you had a chance to sit with the department heads, Dave, and make sure that we're staffed properly? And I ask that because that's where our expenses are. You know, are, do we have, are, are we properly staffed, are we overstaffed? Is there something that could be part-time, that's full-time? Where, is there any spot in there where we can be a little tighter?
There are times where we're having a hard time with the guys finding things to do.
When you say the guys, could you narrow that down?
So highway.
Okay.
Um, even wastewater, I mean, we have two and a half guys at wastewater, it's, I mean, two is plenty.
Do you think it would be a good idea maybe to sit with the department heads and ask them that question again?
I do.
I, I would recommend that we at least ask the question to them and see what they suggest to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't need anyone standing around.
No.
And I think this would be a good year, if we're gonna make sure we're properly staffed, we should absolutely make sure of it.
Mm-hmm.
So, that would be my suggestion, see what the department heads say.
Yeah.
Ask, ask the question again.
Okay.
Well, give them some input, too.
Absolutely, I think they're the ones that really know.
Yeah.
We can't sit here and figure it out, but when you look at the, our costs, that's, that's where our costs are. So, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And they just give us a report to what they, what they think.
So, when do you want to have a budget approved? When, okay, so when do we, what would be the last day? The next, uh, board meeting? Next board meeting?
The seventeenth.
Do we have, oh, so we have two before that, okay.
I would need it approved the seventeenth, because I need to have it.
January six.
Okay.
I have to have the town report to the printers by January twenty-sixth, I believe.
Okay.
So, the la, the absolute drop dead deadline for the warning and your budget is gonna be January seventeenth.
So, we have two meetings before that.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, yeah, that will be the second meeting, you've got the one on the third and the one on the seventeenth.
So, we're gonna have to work out anything we have left to change on the next meeting.
So, do you, have you, have you guys noticed any other things through the budget that you want to discuss or change or talk about?
That was the thing that jumped out to me, so, yeah.
Well, the first response probably was the biggest pill to swallow, isn't it?
Well, it's the biggest percentage, because it was such a small number before, and, um, where are we?
Yeah.
You know, yeah, it went from thirty thousand to fifty-four thousand, so, and I think when we had, you know, the, what we were looking at was the amount of calls, aging population, and, and equipment that needed to be up, updated, so.
It all sounded, yeah, sounded okay, but I'm just wondering if, because that's such a, uh, increase on, on one department, is there any way that that could be pared back and they still feel that they're new business?
They need a new vehicle.
No.
That's really what it is.
They were under.
That's really what it is. I mean, the police department has one of the largest jumps.
The vehicle shouldn't, we, we have, we should be able to fund a vehicle with what we have for capital.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't there a discussion about the van versus the?
So, I think that there was some discussion, too, that they'd kind of been under, you know, they, they.
Underfunded.
Yeah, and that, they really need to update equipment.
Yep, yeah.
Well, they got a vehicle, won't pass inspection.
Right.
Well, that's, I know, so that's not a place we want to.
They've got a vehicle, they've got to, they've got to switch. But whether they buy a brand new one, or whether they buy.
Well, I've started calling around.
Something less than a brand new one.
I've been trying to get, yeah.
Might be an option that might work, it may not.
I've been calling for prices on use of the new one, I can't find either in, in anybody's inventory right now, so.
Have you tried Fenton Fire?
It could be, it could be, you know, we'll just keep calling, we'll find someone.
Fenton Fire?
Fenton Fire has several ambulances and first response trucks in their inventory.
I don't think we want an ambulance, so I think we're looking just sort of like an S M A.
They also have chief vehicles, medic vehicles, all those types of things. And if I may, personally, I think you should roll first response into the fire department. You already have town, town guys who are responding to fire calls during the day. They need things to do, the EMS calls are there, let them run the EMS calls the same as they run the fire calls. Really, uh, first response is a drain. They don't want a transport, they don't want a fundraiser, but they want this and they want that. Roll them into the fire department.
I don't think the fire department wants anything to do with first response, they got rid of it years ago. And, uh, that was one of the problems, it's the training that's involved. We, fire department, I'm sure, doesn't want to be part of the first response, that's a whole separate entity. I know a lot of towns, they are together, but it didn't work out in this town. I can talk to you from experience, I was chief for thirty-two years. He was assistant chief for thirty-something years.
Going, going back to the budget. Um, I do think it's fair to even ask some of these other department heads that maybe don't have some labor on them to take a look once again, if there's anything left in that budget they really don't need to be in there. You know, like, when you look at a recreation, ask the question at least one more time of the department heads before we sit down for this meeting next month.
So, Ann and I have been going through this pretty much, well, a few times a week, just looking to see where there might be some obvious choices to cut. I mean, there's, you know, we could look at the paving line a little bit, you know, we did have, boosted up to four hundred thousand, you know, taking that down.
That comes back and bites us.
Yeah, often.
Well, well, yeah, but it was.
That's like our safety net, if we have to.
It went down to three sixty last year, and we boosted back up, I mean, I don't care, but that's just one where, you know, we, we're probably gonna be eligible for class two for Whipple Hollow this year.
I, I guess my question is, I think we should re-ask all of these departments, is there something you could say? I know you guys have looked as hard as you can, but I think it's a fair question, ask them one more time before.
I, I've gone to department heads and already asked.
Well, I'd like it asked one more time, I guess.
So, like, a couple of things that we've been doing, too, you know, now that we've changed with the transfer station, is looking at, like, you know, dumpster rentals were insane, the amount of money we were paying, like, four hundred bucks a month at fire, which we got rid of, I don't know, six months ago, one at wastewater, which we came up with another solution for that, we got rid of the ones at Rec, so, you know, that's already come out, those are some savings we had.
Those have already come out.
We changed oxygen P's for first response, because we found that it was cheaper to buy the tubes than rent them, so we've gone ahead and switched it, so we should be saving a couple thousand dollars there, like, I've been looking hard at all the expenses and every expense line.
I know you've been looking at everything, I just think it's good to ask one more time to make sure there's something else that they don't see.
There's always a little meat in every budget, you know.
Good question to ask before we sit down at the next meeting, and really.
Yeah.
Mash it out.
So, this kind of, this could change the budget, too, so I, with, with police, I did meet with West Rutland, um, confirmed with Mary Ann this morning that they've already approved a hundred thousand dollars for July first for an officer, and that they would fund a cruiser, they wanted to do a five-year contract, and the cruiser would be funded through those five years. I'm going to Procter tomorrow to see what they want to do, I mean, I think that, you know, we're, I think we're looking at, for the first year at a hundred thousand, we're making like ten grand at the end. You know, we'd have to boost it up, obviously, the way that things go, because things are getting more expensive, so, you know, providing the service, them covering the cost of the vehicle, the cost for the person, you know, we, we'd make a little money on the end of that, so.
I think we need that broken down so we can look at it in the next meeting.
I might have it in front of me, actually. What I need you, if, I mean, if they're, so if they're buying the vehicle over five years, I mean, we need to figure in a little extra there, so that at the end of five years, we have enough to buy the next vehicle. Right, well, or we, we don't contract with it, I mean, that's the thing, you know, it would have to be renegotiated in five years, so.
That hundred is to put on another officer as well?
That would be for, per year, well, we'd have to incre, I think we'd have to increase it with like cost of living and stuff, but yes, the, the hundred would cover officer with all the, um, Bennys, and then it would, you know, we'd add a cruiser and, on top of that, that they would fund for five years.
Hmm.
So, I think the next meeting, I'll have more, because I'll have Procter, too, and then we can really throw some numbers around, and, but I just want to throw that out there, that that's happening as well, so.
Okay.
All right.
Um. Yeah, I, I would love, you know, some input from you guys, too, on this, because like I said, Ann and I have, you know, we're, we're here, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what else, I don't know what you guys want to cut, how you feel about certain things, and, um, you know, we'll follow up with, with Mark and with the, you know, employees and see what we can do, but I think for a lot, with the emergency services and, you know, the need for it, as we're seeing more and more accidents, and, you know, it's, it's a valid increase.
Yeah.
So, we're looking, so, without the special appro, what are the, what's the total of the special appropriations? Don't know yet, we gotta wait till the. No, 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 but project it. What do we think, one sixty?
Yeah, it's approximately one sixty, hold on just a minute, I can give you a better number.
But we don't know until. But that includes the library and, so, some of them, but, and so, without that, we're down roughly four. We're minus four percent? Yeah. And with it, we're plus five? Five point six. Almost six.
So, ten, wait a minute, so, their appropriations aren't up in numbers of what they want, are they? It's, if, we got the budget?
We're just basing on last year.
Basing on last year, so our budget has to be up, if appropriations are the same.
Right.
It's not down.
General fund versus general fund, so that's without the appropriations, because we have to keep the appropriations with the appropriations.
Yeah.
We're down four percent in the general fund budget from last year. And probably most of it's a transfer station. I mean, we've cut a few things here and there, too.
Okay.
Special appropriations is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars.
That was last year you worked off of him?
Yep.
So, that's going up zero.
So, that's roughly five percent of the budget right there.
That's my point, appropriations is the same as last year.
No, no, it's not factored in yet, so without it factored in, we're minus four. Once you factor it in, we're plus six.
If the appropriations are figured the same as last year, that's a zero gain, so that means that we have to be up. If you're up five percent when you put appropriations in, I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm figuring this right, right, Tom?
I think so.
Yeah.
It sounds right to me.
If appropriations are zero from last year to this year, and that's how we're budgeting it.
So, Mark.
Well.
First page of your budget, where it says revenues, and it says property taxes town, without appropriations, you're minus four point eight two percent for what you're asking taxpayers.
We can, so, we've been, no, it is right, because.
It's zero.
The, the appropriations, no one in this room can decide on, I mean, that's based on the voters, and it, like, I mean, like, we went through this before, really should have never been in the general fund budget, because it's an appropriation, it's a separate thing. So, the only thing that we can create with your guys' approval is the general fund with, you know, highway and, and the general fund, that's it. That's all that we can do, and, yeah, so this is what we've come, I mean, we had, I know, like, my salary for your, you know, the person that was here before was way more, was more than I am here now, which doesn't, you know, no big, but, that, so that was a decrease. Um, there was some other things in there, I know there was like, just thinking in town admin, like, moving expense was there last year, it's not here anymore.
Office supplies, we've cranked right down.
Yep, yep, um. So, you know, we had, we actually did decrease some lines in this budget to get it to where it is.
Anna, you referring to page one?
Page one.
Property taxes?
Property taxes for general fund alone is minus four point eight two.
Is that the total of the property taxes you're expecting?
That is what we would be asking taxpayers to pay for general.
Well, that's what you're asking, that's not a revenue, okay.
That, well, that would be a revenue line, yes, for property taxes, would be for general fund alone, not highway, but general fund.
That's not projected property taxes, huh?
That is projected, what we'd have to ask for property taxes.
No, 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 that's not, that's, okay, that's.
We base your property taxes on what your general fund now is.
Because if you look at FY twenty-four versus FY twenty-five, one point four versus one point three.
So, this year's budget was one point four, one.
It was the budget, and the actual is?
We're down, so the revenue was.
That's only what we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's actuals.
Well, that, the actual property tax line, the nine twenty-one thousand, is not accurate, and it won't be accurate until we pay our wise payment to the school district.
All right.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
And it will end up at?
Roughly the one point four six.
Mark, go to page nineteen. Yep, about three quarters down, you see total general fund, and you see right above it says total expenditures. So, if you look, our total expenditures from this year that we're proposing to next year are down three point five four percent in the general fund. So, this year's budget was one point eight hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars. This one, we're proposing one point eight hundred twenty-five thousand, four ninety-nine.
And most of that's due to the, uh.
Is that seventy, seventy thousand dollars roughly?
And most of that's due to the dump, the dump.
Transfer station.
And we've got a few other ones, if you look through here where you see them, the minuses. Look on the percentage line, that's column. So, like, VCA was down six percent.
All the appropriations get paid out, unless you're?
Yes.
Is sure, yes. Yeah, like, the admin budget's down fifteen percent. Management's down.
Where, where are we at when you add everything? Highway?
Four.
Minus.
And appropriations?
Yeah.
Five point six.
Or over five point six. Highway is ups because we increased paving and we had to increase salt, um, due to the new pricing we're receiving for the liquid salt brine that's put on the roads in the summertime for dust control and for winter.
And let that mix with the salt in the winter.
Yeah.
Didn't we hold a three percent last year? What did we hold last year?
I think it was.
Or what?
It doesn't make sense to me.
And then we level funded two years before that?
If it's the same on appropriations.
General fund was eight last year. Remember?
I'm reading spelled.
Remember, we figured it out right before town meeting. It was eight.
But that's, Mark, if you want.
If it stays the same?
Yeah.
Had that in my head, now I gotta rethink, so it's, because it's almost ten percent.
It said it was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in appropriations, correct?
Hundred and fifty-six thousand fifty-six.
So, highway's up though. Highway's up eight percent. General fund's down. Because you guys vote on highway and general fund separately.
Right.
Right.
So, it's the highway that's.
Well, we're concerned.
Right.
So, so the high, the highway.
Okay.
Highway is what driving your bus.
Yeah, that's where your balance off.
Yes.
We're talking levels, yeah, okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
You know, you don't have to vote on highway separately anymore.
No?
No, because there's no, they got rid of that rule where, you know, highway funds had to stay within highway.
When did they hear that? Two, two, three years ago, Butch?
Yeah, just before COVID.
Oh.
So, if there's any rollover, it actually goes in the general fund and doesn't stay with highway anymore.
Okay.
We all choose to keep it highway.
Yeah.
I, I agree, but it doesn't have to be voted separately.
Hmm.
You could just have your highway, you know.
That was done for the purpose of allowing just what Dave said, so that there's a surplus, you could roll that into your general fund and use it for general fund purposes.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but no total, overall, no, I can't.
We used to do it.
You could still earmark it for highway. I mean, just have, you know, you'd have the county line that says highway rollover or whatever.
But was that a solid?
Any particular?
She said salt.
So, the salt, it's the brine that the salt and the chloride we put on the dirt roads, it went up quite a bit. We just found out about that like last week, so.
And so that gives the highway that bump of eight percent.
Well, and, and paving, paving went up.
I know, but that's our, kind of our safety net if we get in an emergency situation, you know.
Well, I looked at, I looked at taking a hundred out of paving, which I, I don't, you know, if we don't have to do it fine, and that puts us down to three percent.
Well, let's, let's ask those other questions before we do that.
See if, ask the department heads, especially the highway, if, if we're proper.
If it keeps raining like this, we won't need the salt.
So, let's see.
We can't.
That's a pretty.
Gives us a question.
So, yeah, so the liquid mag calcium chloride went up. We budgeted from thirty thousand to ten thousand. Chad has gravel and stone from budget, we budgeted twenty-eight this year to forty this year. Um, coal patch up by a thousand, five hundred dollars. Crack sealing, he's asked, we did five thousand, but we did overspend last, like, three thousand dollars over, so from five thousand to ten. Paving went from three forty to four hundred.
Nope.
Um, line striping went from six to twelve thousand.
That's a hell of a, that's a huge price.
So.
And your tires and power blades went from three thousand to seven thousand.
But the line striping wasn't completed in this fiscal year, was it?
We haven't done any line striping in house.
So, that's why.
We're not taking the blame for the stuff Mark doesn't like, no way.
I don't like six percent increase, so I'll put it that way. I think we gotta take a look at that.
So, well, throw me some, some, what you guys want to do here too. I mean, I'm open for suggestions, so, and I, but I can, you know, we can go, Ann and I can talk with Chad tomorrow too, um, and see what we can do with some of these numbers as well, so.
I mean, for me, somewhere we gotta find a hundred to get rid of. So, we're down around three percent.
Okay.
That'd be ideal.
That's where I, you know, I can live, live with that.
We can do that. I'm not worried about that. We'll find a hundred.
Well, like I said, let's talk to the department heads and see what they say.
Maybe, you know.
And then let's, let's look at a deep next meeting.
Our staff levels.
Yeah.
If we, if we can stand around, then we gotta make a decision, or at least look at what we're doing. Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
All right, anything else before we move on from the budget?
Ann, thank you.
No, thanks, Ann. I know. All right, RV discussion. I missed that last, last meeting.
Well, we didn't do much, because we were told it was solved.
No, we didn't say that. We said it had become, not become an issue or disappeared.
Not become a problem, right?
It's back.
All right, well, um, but there is a resolution.
This is Mark's baby, so I, I'm sure he'd love to talk about it.
No, I don't love to talk about it.
So, I did, so I did talk to him this, earlier this week and asked, you know, if he wanted to, me to jot some resolution down, so we just came up with this quick. Um, and that's really it.
And this, this, and this is pretty close to what we talked about, but it doesn't include exactly what we talked about. Because I said we probably should put this for any pull-off along the state.
Do we have any other ones?
Yeah. There's another one on the other side of Route seven.
Palmville.
Yeah.
And there's one in Palmville.
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
And the monument right there.
I think it should be covered, all of the pull-offs off the state. They shouldn't be overnight.
Dave has a question.
Yeah, the fish and the.
We've got a mosquito place.
Fish eat, no, mosquitoes, we got that area. And then the monument, there's a pull-off there.
Can't, can't see me.
Go ahead.
So, uh, if I remember correctly from our meeting last, or two weeks ago, even if we do this, Rutland Town also has to do this, correct, because of the location of the pull-off?
Yep.
Is that true?
Yeah.
They have, for an action to be taken by AOT to remove somebody, both boards have to agree that they should not be living on the pull-off. This is to prevent anyone from any of the pull-offs on state. It was, I thought it was much better to have a broader thing, so we don't have them moving up to the next pull-off.
Well, no, but I just.
Because this comes down, and I'm farther away than a lot of residents are from here, but it comes down to, uh, quality of life next to a generator running all night.
Is that pull-off, or, oh, is that one town?
It's right in the town line, right?
It's right. It starts, it starts on the town line. Most of it's in Rutland Town, but it starts at the town line.
It's only flat one in town.
But it's, it's farther south, it's farther south, so it might be relative.
Most, most of it's in Rutland Town.
Most of it is in Rutland Town. The problem is it affects people in Pittsburgh. That's the problem.
Go ahead.
How about the trailhead off of Whipple Hollow? Is that private or is that also town? Because I noticed.
We're, we're talking state, the state road, that's a world.
Okay, well, you know, you have somebody living at the trailhead in an RV, right?
Yeah, do you know that?
No, is it private land?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
On Whipple Hollow.
I know, I'm not sure where that is.
Where nature conservancy is?
If you're going out towards, uh, West Rut, they got that new spot on the left-hand side, they got a sign over there and, like, tra, uh, yeah, it's a trailhead as far as I know, because they have hiking trails and nature stuff and whatnot.
Where, whereabouts, Joe?
Yeah. Well, I would probably say it's closer to West Rut. In fact, a piece of property that I was looking at across the street, that's a hundred and thirty-five acres, is listed under West Rut. So, that might actually be West Rut. I want to say it's one of those rail trail thingies, but I don't know.
That's probably the West Rutland.
It's a new trailhead that opened up. They got a parking area over there. In fact, actually, I've seen Chief Warfel sitting over there. So, it, it might be another thing that's right on the line. But the other day, I passed by and there was an RV parked over there with a missing front right tire. So, I know he wasn't going anywhere anytime soon. It looked like he'd been sitting there for a while.
Maybe he was looking for his tire.
What color was it?
Same color as the one that's across the street from March. I thought maybe they moved from there to there, but then I passed by and I was like, nope, it's somebody new. Because there's no way they fixed their tire that quickly.
Have you seen that extension cord that goes from his generator in?
So, Mark, would you, would you like it to include all pull-offs along the Route seven corridor and the, within the town of Pittsburgh?
Or bordering the town of Pittsburgh too, you know, and include that one. Because I don't think we should just do it for one. If you don't want to put it up, then they just move across the road or they move up to the monument.
Yeah, the nice thing up there though is everything sits like this.
They have levelers on both.
Tom, unfortunately, you're correct.
The nature conservancy is pretty flat.
Well, it is.
Just say it, just say it.
But, but what AOT says is the administration doesn't really care if anyone's sleeping on the side of the road from the state, and that's what they told me. And it has to be a movement by the towns or town. And we do, we do border that right on the edge, and it does affect people on the other side of the road that are residents in Pittsburgh.
Well, no, I, that, I get that whole part. I'm just trying to think, because like Joe said, there's other places, they're gonna leave your place and they're gonna go to someplace else in town.
And if you want to build this for those places too, that's fine.
I think that would be something that, that board, we'd want to do an ordinance on, right, on all the town property.
Yeah.
We should.
We have to request, we have to request this from the state to do the state roads.
So, but I think.
So, is it two, gonna be two sep, is it gonna be two separate things? One, we're gonna request it on the state roads, and then two, we're gonna do an ordinance for our own town?
Have to do an ordinance, but if they're parked on someone's private property, then there's a whole other, then it's a zoning issue.
That's a different thing, but, I mean, our.
Well, I'm just thinking, like, where do we have pull-offs that the town owns? I mean, it's in a right-of-way, but it's still owned by somebody else.
But don't.
If it's in a right-of-way, that's all about town.
If it's in a right-of-way, don't we have? It's not owned by the town. The town has a right-of-way to maintain the property.
Well, right, I mean, we still own the land under the road. You, it's just an easement, basically, but if it's within the town's right-of-way, don't we can, basically control it?
If it's blocking the traveled lane, we could control it. If it's off the side, there's really not much we can do about it.
Okay, I.
But they could pull into like the first response building.
Oh, then it's, yeah.
Something there, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's town property.
There's another one, it's town property. You don't want somebody pulling in their parking all night or, or even out back here? Yeah, right here. Same thing. I mean, you've got to say all municipal property.
I did contact the AOT guy in the area who's been involved with this and said that we were gonna bring this up tonight and that he also contacted Rutland Town.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So, I'm curious.
Well, I can make these changes.
Talk to AOT.
Pardon me?
Curious who you talked to at AOT.
Uh, Brian Roberts.
Okay.
So.
That didn't sound good.
He's in charge of your area here, Butch, no, that's.
Areas from this mass border to the Canadian.
Well, you know what I mean, our area.
Did you guys want to make a?
He was really responsive.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Know my own time.
Um, a motion with that tonight with the suggested changes, and then we can get signatures done this week?
Yep.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Good, yeah, I'll make a motion.
With, with, with both ordinances?
I'm gonna make a, a motion on this one, and I think the other one should be separate, don't you, right?
Well, we'll have to bring something to you first, so we'll just move forward with that one.
Right, so, yes, make a motion on this one.
Make a motion that we, uh, put together this resolution on the pull-offs on the state highways within Pittsburgh.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Thank you.
Okay.
And then I will make a motion that Dave, uh, put together a document to cover all town property, pull-offs, areas.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye. Aye?
I can probably change this right after our meeting real quick, and we'll just sign it tonight.
Very cool.
It'd be the easiest way to do it.
I told this would never happen.
Oh, okay. Um, all right, local options tax discussion.
So, thank you, Mark. Um, Alicia and I have been talking about this a little bit. So, this was brought up a few months ago about getting it on the ballot to see if the town would support a local option tax.
Hmm.
Just following up to see.
Yeah.
Um, I did a little research back, the first time we did, I was starting a little bit of it today, just to see what, you know, it looks like the town, just based on sales and use, not on rooms and meals, would bring in about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So, one thing I was thinking about is that, you know, we have this waterline project coming up on Bridge one oh eight, that's, what is it coming at? Three eighty-five, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? That, you know, we don't have three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to pay for it.
Hmm.
This is a good way to cover some of those expenses and, what's that?
A third of it.
Yeah.
For one year, I mean, you know, so, looking at, it's a good way to cover some of these capital expenses that are quite expensive. That's just my take on it, but, I mean, it's up to the town to vote yea or nay on it, really.
Do you have a sunset clause on that?
Don't have to. Yeah, it's.
No, I was just wondering, because you're saying these capital expenses, and then if those are done, that's what I, why I was asking for a sunset.
I don't know if it would ever be done.
You know, saying capital expenses unfortunately are endless. It's like owning a house, you're always, sort of fix something.
One thing, just to think about, is that we're like, I think us and Proctor are the only towns that don't do it.
Well, that's, I know, we're surrounded by towns that are.
Everywhere we're going, we're paying anyway.
Yeah. And this way, other people in Pittsburgh would be helping to contribute.
How does this work? If I sell you a two-by-four, I have to charge you the state sales tax, and that local option tax is tied right onto that?
It's one percent.
One percent.
And then the state sends it back to the town.
They send us back three-quarters of it.
They take their cut.
They take a chunk of it.
Yeah.
They don't get it all. So, town don't get it all then.
We got three-quarters of it.
Yeah.
Three-quarters.
So, you're giving the state twenty-five percent of your.
But you're, you're also taking in money from.
Processing fee.
You're taking.
Already getting.
You're taking money in from people that travel through town and buy goods as well, so, you know.
Not just.
What are you doing if it's tourism and stuff like that? But in our little, making house business, with a lot of this local trade and it's, most of the two-by-fours we sell don't go out of the county, let alone the state.
Hmm. And as a, as a person myself, I look at that. I will not, you know, go to Burlington or Essex or something. I'll go up to St. Alden's where it's less tax. I mean, I, I don't know if people in town would look at it that way.
Well, it costs a lot more than gas when St. Alden's.
Yeah, I know.
To pay that one.
Well, when, when, well, when I'm up in that area, I, I think about who charges the most tax. And, um.
I mean, ultimately, though, the debate is not whether we agree with the tax enough, we want to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. That is what we're here to.
And it's equitable.
So, I mean.
You're right, you're right, yeah.
And I, I, I think we should put it on the ballot and let the voters decide.
There's no way I'm gonna agree with a tax increase, so I would not be in favor of putting it on, but that's fine. I'm gonna stay right there.
Pretty local business, I'll probably feel that way.
That, that's fine, I understand what you guys want to do, but.
Yeah, like I've stated before, I'm not in favor of putting more taxes on towns. I gotta, you know. The flip side is, I guess, if that's what the townspeople want, you know.
They would be the ones deciding, not us.
They would be the ones deciding, not us, so, um, I'm not gonna vote for it, but.
That's the democratic way, I think.
That is the, I know. That's, we're just voting to put out, whether to put on the ballot or not.
Five people decide, that's my thought.
May I just ask, when you do put it on the ballot, I think, you know, like Dave gave us the projected, if, some sort of informational meetings that might discuss that, so people know what they're voting on.
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
It'll be brought up.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, we should find, also find other ways to get the information out and so people understand exactly what it is and what it will do, so.
Cell phone blast.
Oh, yeah, I know, now that we got the tax, the tax.
It was brought to me, what, months ago, and, you know, I figured my due diligence to bring it to you guys.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, Butch.
So, from a perspective of Montpelier and what you have to go through, and what I've been seeing in the last, oh, three or four years, we do, uh, at least six or eight towns a year on char, you have to have a charter change to do this. You have to change your charter to do this. It's a pretty easy process. But six to eight towns a year are implementing a one percent local options tax. That's just historical knowledge for, for you folks.
Okay.
The process is, and you just alluded to it, uh, I'm sure, is that, you know, you authorize, uh, the question to go on the ballot. Your attorney will draw up a charter change for you, and you can draw it up permissively, otherwise you, you, you can give yourself the option of charging it or not charging it. Uh, the select board, uh, you can draw it up for certain, uh, items, like a capital fund, like, uh, Dave, Dave just mentioned. Uh, you can draw it up for which tax, or you can draw it up for all three of the various sales taxes and just pick one.
Okay.
Uh, so that's, that's the options that, that the board would have. Then it would have to be passed, uh, and then, uh, through the House and to the, to the Senate, and then to the governor's desk. So this is not, you know, you vote on it in, in March and you start collecting it in May. It's, it's, it takes.
The process.
It's darn close to a year or more, and I sit here and I listen to you struggling to try to find a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, you just made a big swing at the, at the transfer station, found yourself about forty-five thousand dollars. So there's a lot of pros and cons, uh, and I'm not gonna advocate your way tonight, uh, but that's, that's just the process that it's going through, and that's what we're seeing in Montpelier on a fairly regular basis now.
Okay.
As money becomes tight for everybody. And for every town, uh, that we're seeing that, especially in the, uh, the possibility of having probably a twelve or fourteen percent increase in our tax. Statewide tax. It's been estimated at about eighteen, nine percent. Last year it was estimated at nine. We got it down to about, oh, seven, nine percent or something like that. So we, the legislature can buy it down. We had a lot of money, we could buy the whole thing down, but we don't have those kind of funds anymore. So I'm, I'm thinking if we could get that eighteen, nine down to around twelve percent, we've, we've done a pretty good job, and that's still gonna be a, a big pull swath.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, in one year?
Yeah.
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 Exactly, and it depends on the voters, here again. It's, you know, when you vote, vote the local school budget is what drives that most.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, if we were a tourist town.
Yeah.
I'd say, you know, absolutely, you know, because it would be a win, a win-win, you know, for everybody. Yeah, we're all gonna pay a little more, but on the flip side, we're gonna get more back. But we aren't necessarily a tourist town, so.
And we don't have control of our total.
I'll have an offline, I'll have an offline conversation with you.
What's that?
I have an offline conversation with you.
Oh.
But it's, it, we don't have control over that school budget, that state.
Well, you do, you, when you vote, we're against it.
You do, but you don't. It goes through the state.
I'm not here to debate the school budget, I'm just saying this is what really, what happens.
So.
I've never stepped.
Either way, we need to, um, I have, make, I think we should have a vote tonight on whether we put it on the ballot or not.
Well, I'll make a motion we put it on the ballot, let the voters decide.
Okay, we have a second? I'll second, so we can fur, have further discussion. Again, not debating the merits of, I mean, like Butch said, there's pros and cons to it, but this is why we have, you know, time to have maybe some informational meetings and discuss it more, and ultimately just letting the taxpayers decide, so putting it in their lap instead of just the five of us deciding.
It kind of takes the monkey off us, basically. I mean, if, if they want it, they're gonna vote for it. If they don't want it, they're gonna vote no. Simple as that.
Yeah. Is there any way, there isn't any way to know, um, of that hundred and twenty thousand that you're talking that we're gonna get? How much of it comes from people in town versus people out of town?
No, because it's just based on receipts, sales receipts.
Total receipts. Whatever the sale taxes applies to, it's gonna apply that one percent to it. Some things are, some things aren't.
I mean, because I have, even though I live in Pittsburgh, I have a Brandon address, and if then I buy online, I pay seven percent, you know, I get dinged, so.
Thank you. No, you're, you're welcome in Brandon.
Yes.
We need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like you do, so.
Now it's wrecking a joint.
Oh, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's easier for you to get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially with you being here, um, you, you talked about add one percent tax, uh, point two-five of that state heaps. Do we know what happens with that point five percent?
That goes to, uh, for administration of the, of the tax, collecting the tax at the state level.
Okay.
Sending, uh, sending the checks back to the.
Administrative fees.
I would think you probably have somebody else as a voter ask that question.
Yep.
I, we got to keep the whole one percent, sure, let's maybe do it, because we're gonna have to pay for that water line or whatever it is anyway.
Right.
But, yeah, know where that other quarter percent goes.
Yeah, it's pretty standard overhead.
Yeah.
Yeah, projected about a hundred and twenty thousand a year that it would bring in.
Just what, yeah, you can go right to the Department of Taxes and it gives all the stats for the quarterly. So I, I didn't, you can't look up, is it alcohol and tobacco is the one? I don't think you can get the data, but you can get rooms and meals and sales and use. So, but you can go right to the Department of Taxes website and they have all the quarterly stats, and it's all done by, it's a big Excel spreadsheet, and they, you find the town in it. Click it on, and it tells you all kinds of things. Pretty neat, actually.
All right, so we've had a motion and a second, just to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Hey.
Hi. All right. Um, assessor errors and omissions, it was just a name change for a parcel?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a motion to change, okay. Do we have a motion, change the name on that parcel?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, um, any questions on the orders? Yep.
Oh, Alicia, don't forget liquor board.
I ain't forgetting it, it's on here.
Okay, making sure.
Let's go in order.
Okay.
And we got the new one from tonight, right?
Yep. I had a question on the new one, I just gotta find it.
Who am I?
I think I got it.
Okay.
Yep, buried in the middle.
I had one question, uh, write appraisal, that looks down a lot from what it normally is.
She didn't work a couple weeks.
Okay.
She, she took a, she took a personal day and then she only worked like a half a day, one other day. She hasn't been in as much because Karen's been able to cover what's been coming in for questions and such.
Which was what we hoped would happen.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
So Brookside Services is our.
One of the people that serves all of our generators.
No.
No, no.
Sorry, I'm Brookside, sorry, I'm thinking.
Transfer station.
It is Brookside, so what's the generator here in Brookside?
That's, that's the.
So the, the, the transfer station, so they've been buying back the punch cards.
Yeah, I saw that noted, I just wanted to make sure.
Bringing them in, so.
That's the term we're gonna use for them.
But what is Brookside Services, is the, is the transfer station, or the?
Yeah.
The generator people. Sorry.
Um, the tire disposal, I take it this was a big dump of tires that we had?
Probably from the ones we purchased through the year and had the old ones.
It's Brookside Services, Brookside Services.
Yeah, they're, they've been buying back the punch cards and it's, it's just.
I thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure. Um, Dave, if this isn't the time you and I discuss the tax rebate from the oil?
Yes, what?
Has that been done?
So, so we have to wait till December thirty-first, because I have to file it from January one to December thirty-one for what we purchased. So I have it on my desk, ready to go. Once we've done all of our December purchasing, I'll be able to pull all the invoices and file that.
So this year we'll be able to get that back.
Perfect.
We haven't been doing that, I guess.
Oh, okay.
We haven't?
No.
We have, we are, we're, so we are diesel tax exempt anyways, and we filed that paperwork and our paperwork for that, we filed in twenty twenty-two, and have been, you know, renewed it in twenty twenty-two to be covered through twenty twenty-four, but there's an additional one that we can now do that hadn't been done before, that I have the paperwork and will be filing it on an annual basis, but it has to be done January to December.
Good, just want to make sure we're getting that back this time.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Ann and, and Dave.
Any other questions on payroll? All right, um, so it's, we'll recess select board and open as liquor board. We just have one item, the rec, um, that's going to hold the ice ball, ice bowl tournament on.
January fourteenth.
What day was it?
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth.
And would like to serve some alcohol there. We have to give the, okay.
I think Red Clover's gonna be doing it.
And they are, they are gonna have their insurance coverage.
Oh, yeah, they have to.
They have to get disapproved so they can get there.
Accept all the liability.
Yep.
That's true.
It goes through the state, they have to do it.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I will.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Come on to liquor board, back into select board, and we will, um, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn and go into executive session.
No, you can't adjourn, you have to sign.
I know, I'm reading, because I'm reading, I'm reading, Dave caving.
To keep you on track.
I know, thank you.